It's uh.
Guess we're sitting down there.
That alright.
They don't like.
Okay.
So my son-in-law stationed now.
Which one?
Without who the rub being or state they miss fall in leisure.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Yes, they do.
You know where I'm sitting.
Another call nation as I am.
Right there.
But my daughter has the last name now.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi there, my friend. Good, how are you doing?
And then we had the the one with the steak thing on. Family. That's one, yeah. Everything else is stuff we've already.
So it's like a lot of space last so.
There you go.
Hard for. I think the what we have to do is like.
So that's one we'll start.
Oh, rap, rap, rap.
I wish we would mix this. I'll get to this in the last.
I have to go to the.
Have to go to the first side too.
Yeah.
I'll go up really quick.
Alright. It's yours. Yeah, one way, probably me. Who won this zero. Zero trigger, zero. I'm a zero man.
I'm sorry, which one did you want? Did you want the family one at first or?
That's where we've ended. Who do we have? Our income division isn't down yet. So we did the accessory well in some.
Oh.
Yeah, well, come on, it was actually he did Joe this.
I can't be scientific in something.
And with the landscaping.
So how's your day going?
Good.
Bad. What's the long day? That's not actually changed. Get the video piece very focused. Focus, we're on the ones that. Take one.
How do you learn open your?
Emails.
Let's have take your.
Books and clothes and that, I gotta get this to him instead.
Their full party.
Hey.
Here's your parking. Resistance.
What do you think about school?
And it didn't belong in the whole.
Music.
That's what I figured. Bye. I'm cleaning all the ways. Alright, my.
I won't say anything, but I have a bomb at that. I'm not gonna. I've been thinking about it all the way in town.
You got it. The phone doesn't sound good.
So if you want your baby.
Yeah, I will ask you one question.
Then I'll tell you.
Yeah, that's.
To me and. It fits.
Is there a day?
Really?
For the big store coming.
Not long and short and busy. So most of my family went to Provo, I went to Idaho.
How's it going?
Alright.
Beautiful, yeah.
It was amazing.
But they said that they would have to argue.
They think you're hoping to get started.
I was given one.
Yesterday at two o'clock.
We understood. Ask Parkinson. She said, do you wanna carry the truth?
Tell you the truth on that. There, I think they're hoping for this year on the.
Um. But. Uh, so I'm salesman for British or I have a rental business. So I do online sales. I make problems.
She didn't want to.
Not, not really in particular, I was always I was for a video production company. They went under and that's I just.
Major.
Rather than face the job, I might work that. Or office. And you're trying, you're not.
I love you.
At that front corner, they'll have to replace the screen recorder head on. Battle of mine. Okay, this. Don't be.
We're having a great sort of do off potato salad.
Sure.
You have a bit of talent today. How you doing?
Change my ads and do that. I think.
I got a little.
Water, I'm just gonna miss something.
You gotta look around for what?
You have the reason. Yeah, they're okay. After looking around. Maybe only driven wreck for you can get away.
How you doing?
I can answer that.
Is it empty?
It is.
Is there garbage?
I can see the thing. Right, oh, there it is. There it is. See, you're not. Hold over there. Did I make your spot? No, I'm not like. Yeah, I can say hello.
I didn't want, I just wanted. What is going on there?
With my hair.
Quit being outside. It's uh. You're old to be outside.
Wasn't for the work. Flash beer.
Doing that. Some project.
Be well enough without having any of this.
Why not?
I mean.
The project.
Well, okay, I just.
I should have been some food. Oh, right there.
Boy, I think it was terrible. I'm not the most of the boys.
You got it.
How you doing?
Good. See.
I was not pickled.
You hearing any, you hearing any movement on that? A dare. They. Flat or? Oh, yes, their flats already been done. I just, they can go to work. I just wondered. So you got.
I think they were worried about. About water. Cause they've got to put in a. Let's say I just an ex who just had to go pretty deep, so I think they're gonna wait till fall or spring. Later can put that in.
Yeah, but they could be doing other stuff now.
That's the critical.
I guess I can't just. I go anywhere here.
Now, the trouble is, they've got a bunch, a lot of that stuff, they want to beat the roads. But that has to be in place before we come to the road.
If you think I'm gonna hear something.
Yeah.
You haven't heard anything from anybody about that. A dare out there.
No, I, I've been there doing it the same day. We're like, it should be.
Have they almost.
It'd be going by now.
That's French system. Andy, how you doing?
Just building.
How you been?
All torn up fast. They have all the. They were putting a ground well in for the.
They all add.
I think it feels just.
That's good.
We wrapped. I think they had a major break. Hopefully, not what they were fixing. So not putting in the. The irrigation system yet. They were working on a plan. Up out of the canals.
New school.
They, they, they put in. So basically, my. And then they ran a pipe all the way. Your. Two things. In a pipeline. And so I thought that's switching.
Or maybe they were happening.
There's a hand, maybe. Maybe the angel. I or so. Open in the next day. They always regret.
Where are you?
I don't know where.
They are.
They're younger kids.
All.
Yeah.
So, um. Most of them.
Voice.
Anthony. So mayor, you know what they're doing?
But we put that as far as the.
That's a.
Oh, yeah, that's put in, they have put on eighty-nine. That's why that. I'm gonna say this to you. But if not, well, then turn it to that all day.
How long?
It is taking a long time. They've had, they've had a few palpations. Like you lost those places to them. They've never located the way that they control without. No, it's a real problem.
I said you can't divide out the right.
Alright, everyone. Thank you for being here as, as you're eating, we're gonna go ahead and let Alan start talking so that we can. Get the show on the road. We may have a moment. Okay, so Alan, I guess we'll go ahead and just turn the time over to you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, man. Welcome everybody. Uh, if you run out of food, there's more back there, so don't be shy. Eat onion and waffles. Especially before the trout gets here, like. Uh, thank you for coming, I wanna let you know that we've made all the changes that you appointed us to on the last one. We'll have a change. We're gonna try to go through and finish up what we have not reviewed for this meeting. After we get through that part of it, if there are questions about the prior parts, we can go back to it. Also. So this is where we ended up last time. Uh, we're still in the parking. And we're talking about, we've just gone through, I think, the. The requirements in each zone or each area or each side. We pondered that, the, the housing, the businesses, how many spaces they need for thousand or per unit, stuff like that. Yes.
It's a question.
Yeah.
Um. I went to. Busters the other day for lunch. And thinking this parking stuff.
We require ten units or ten parking spaces for, for thousand square feet.
For, for a sit-down restaurant, right?
Right.
So how does that work? With, where, where they're on Main Street, or if they're like in a strip mall, or. I mean, I can see it if it's a standalone restaurant sitting out there, you know, like Applebee's or whatever, but. How does it work when they're? They're, well, I guess they have shared spaces.
Shared places, they have to be able to come in and show us, we're gonna use it during this time of the day. When the other businesses are not to be used enough. But they have to be able to prove that. Now, something like Sparks. Um, their grandfathered in what theirs, who that was the restaurant. And I think they have an apartment network, but they understand the concern where Pizza Hut used to be. Now, you know, sit-down restaurants gone, all they have is drive-through, or you just. Drive in, pick it up and leave. They're cramped for space even in that, but we don't have that same town.
I, I guess the question I have is that ten sounds like a lot. For, for a sit-down restaurant, I, that, I maybe that's industry standard. But I get thinking. For thou- a thousand square feet, which is very, very small.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Ten, ten dedicated parking spots. I don't know, I guess that's what it's been, right? It's been ten?
And I will tell you, most restaurants coming here and they're putting in more parking than the last people. At sit-down restaurants, that they know.
So like for Chipotle, did they put down, did they do more than that?
Yes. Yeah, and they, and they're always packed.
The thing you have the problem with is there's time you figure the employees. Then there's no room for anybody else, that's like over there by Pizza Hut. And all them, I mean, you can't even get in there and park at all.
And in some of these, if you remember, we went back through, and now we're requiring. The ten spaces for so, so many thousands plus. The highest number of employees on ship. And we're adding that to a lot of these.
I had a conversation with somebody about that the other day, though, that. Was struggling with that because they said. You know, you require. Well, it's, it's the highest number of employees that would be there at any one time, right? Yeah, okay, cause I think they were in the impression that they had to have. The number for every employee, yeah, but, okay.
It's the highest on ship. So if it's a.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Till ten o'clock, and your highest is I've got ten employees.
Yeah.
In the building.
Well, that makes sense.
Even though I may have over a hundred employees total. But it's what you have in that area. Cause some of these, if you do a two or three thousand foot of building. And they're even at ten, and you've got fifteen employees, all of a sudden, half the parking lot disappears. For just in four years. So, that's, that's some of the concern we have. Applebee's is a fine example of, they're always crowded out there during that. When they're running. And there at that center five. That's all code, we didn't change that.
And you wanna.
What do we?
Where? Dog Joe.
Oh, if not either, you just gotta walk a little ways, come on.
Get into South parking lot instead of. You need a West parking lot, it's in the dirt. We have South one.
What? What do you require for a food truck?
For a food truck?
Parking wise? Anything, nothing, zero?
No, they're required to have adequate parking. That's different. If I'm putting a food truck out by. Port of Park, when I get parking on the streets. They're not required to have any of them because it's the people that are funding that. You go into a food court and they have a requirement, they have to do that, Brad Wolf. There are so many parking spaces required for me.
Yeah, we went through that pretty well.
Yeah, it was very, very, and we had a lot of the, if any companies came in here during that time. And talked us through their needs and their concerns. But there is specifics. This one, the D is connectivity, one of the things we require. And this, we, we clean the language and draw it together. Is that cross connectivity between. Uh, businesses. Because it's like our subdivisions, we don't want you to have to drive clear out to the main road. And around and come back to get to your neighbor's kids behind you. We want that connectivity through wherever possible. So we reduce the width on our main roads. The code, the wording we had in it says, well, if you can't find another solution. You know, then do it. We didn't think that was strong enough language. We want it, it's required, unless you come in free to the zoning administrator. There's a need or there's a, there's a. Barrier that's blocking us from being. We wanna review those case by case. Um, donatory, multifamily. Parking options, this is basically going down to spaces. How, how big the parking space is, what's required, what percentage of it's gonna be required in each zone. Eighty percent of them can be benign by sixteen, majority of cars, especially multifamily, I mean the small cars. And we still have that twenty percent capacity to be twenty feet long. That they fit within there now. Compact cars, true compacts, the GL, or GLs and stuff like that. They can actually have a percentage of those that can go that big by sixteen degrees.
Question about connectivity.
Yeah.
Take for example, uh. The separate, the, the. Harbor Freight. And the. Parking lot with north. Of Harbor Freight.
You're talking the residential.
No, there's.
Or goes in there, they might behave as monkey.
So, yeah. There's, there's parking lots there. Would that be required to be?
If they were to come in today and want to build that, we would force them to. Just for the simple reason, now they gotta drive out on the street. And ride back. Yeah, so that's, that's what that cleans up.
What, what's the twenty percent, twenty foot long ones for, like, is that just for?
As they fix apps and stuff like that. And even them, if you've ever drove, like, take out. Full fruit cab and full bed. Twenty feet's not enough.
He died, yeah.
Cause you'll still have four feet that can help that.
Yeah, the compact, like, said what it's for, he said twenty percent long ones.
Yeah, and that one is twenty-five percent of the eight. Or, yeah.
Okay.
So it's not of the total, it's twenty-five percent of the eight.
Okay. Easy.
And one of the things they're required. When they do this, they have to, you have to have them all in the same. So you can't scatter them around, or I've got a twenty footer, a sixteen, uh. You know, anything like that, because. Your continuity doesn't work, so you want all your compacts in one spot. And all of your full-size ones in it. Parking structures, we actually had to go down to eight by sixteen. In the parking structure. And that's for the compact. Right? Case pull up. Commercial, nine by twenties is the standard, up to twenty-five percent of those can be your eight by sixteens, the compacts. Um. You can reduce down. Do an eighteen foot one, when you're up against a sidewalk, if they put in a six-foot side. Cause our standard for sidewalks is five feet. Well, if I hang one, damn, there's twenty feet, it's got me some these. Okay, welcome. Um. And so if they'll put in a six-foot sidewalk, then you still have that five feet of sidewalk for people to block through. We found that as a problem when, when they would do those shorter ones, and people were pulled tighter. And the bumper would hang through and block the site. So now we force them back to a six-foot sidewalk. The edge of the sidewalk. Okay, fine. Uh, off-site parking, this is one of the challenges we had, in the past, it was two hundred feet. If I wanted to have another parking lot close to my business. We said it had to be in two hundred feet of the front door. We've extended that to five hundred, to hopefully to offset some of these. Situations where there's a parking lot over here, it's just outside of that three hundred. Still closer, closer than walking distance. And you can't just do it as a pro applies to do that. You have to measure the sidewalk or what path they have to travel. We just felt like that was something that made it better, it's also what we did in the form-based code, we're gone, let's keep them consistent. Okay, anytime you guys need to soften. Alright? Um. The university district does have some. Um, exceptions, they can go a little bit further. In the. Uh, parking space location. If you're coming up next to a boundary, you wanna make sure they have high-back curbs, so people aren't going onto the neighbor's property, things like that. Wheel stops in certain situations.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
What'd you say about the high-back curb?
They have to have a high-back curb if you're parking up next to somebody else's property line. To prevent you from going into that part. It's the edge of your parking. Okay. It's just to keep them from going over somebody else's. Wheel stops in some circumstances, we require those, if they don't do. They don't have some.
Or wheel shafts.
Yeah, then they have to use the wheel stops.
That includes when they're, you know, it's the sidewalk.
If they have the shorter, and we, and they only have a five-foot sidewalk, especially at retro. When they come in and both them in. And they hate it because they're tough to follow. So most of them will try very hard to. So they usually put the six-foot sidewalk in if they can. Front yard parking, uh. You cannot have parking spaces and maneuvering areas, they shall not be provided within this part of the yard. This is in your residential. We try to keep people from just turning their front along. Now, the exceptions to that is if you have a garage, however many it holds, two, three, four, you can park in there and you can put one. Behind that garage door. So a two-car garage, you actually park. And do. One of the questions we ran up against. If we're still allowing them to park on that pad in front of the garage. Are you guys okay with saying, okay, you can put two parking spots if you don't? That was the question I wanted to ask you guys.
Like, is the way they're parking?
Well, we, we've made it difficult for people that don't have garages on their house, they have to either park on the side or in the back. But his neighbor that has a garage, he can park in front of his garage and it's legal. Would they have to pour a pad? Yes, has to be concrete or asphalt.
No, I don't see any problem with that.
And it's, and if you're also looking at it and going, we still have the requirement, only so much of your yard can be parked surface.
Yeah, as long as it's got enough. Proportionment, I think that should be okay.
Is that something you guys would be okay with?
Don't we already, so what about the, where does it talk about like a pad that you put in for like? Or you know, and that's something.
It's, it's something that you can put, that has to be behind. Either at the side of the house or behind, cannot be in the. Yeah, good cap stuff, that's.
If you have, if you have an RV pad to side, if it's behind the front house, you can also have the parking spot front.
Do correct.
No, not for RV, but the car.
No, for the car.
The car game.
Yeah. So if you have a two-car garage and an RV pad on the side, you can have six parking spaces.
No, two-car garage and two here, you got four. Then you put your RV on the side.
But if you have.
Being in front of your.
If the RV is not there, you can park hard as long as they're not in the front yard. Although you could do three or four back in there.
But can't you put one, that, that was my question, I thought you could put one in front of the RV.
Not one in front of the RV. Can we change that?
No. I don't think we did.
She said that's.
Yes.
What if you have to pick a connected to the RV?
Well, that's called temporary. It's usually not that permanent. No, we go this. And here's the thing, it happens and we're not out there checking everybody. Yeah, unless somebody complains. But if they complain, I have the code to come back and say, reporting to the code.
When they put the, uh, part of the complex, we have been, you know, we have the land that they waste. They block the both sides. They have like calling through their mom. Right across from Sunrise, like or Park. So I live right across from that complex. And we, they switched it to residential parking, and that, that's helped out a lot, but. People like. Walking, you know, ready, so there's just enough room for a car.
Yeah, we had a lady, you probably, you probably know her, she lives there on Third West, and she's. She was having that problem, the college kids was parking right up through her driveway, so when she went to pull out, she couldn't see down there. So, we had, we told her to just. Well, not we, actually our cops. Gave her permission to just paint the curbs yellow. Go away on both sides of the driveway and that kind of problem.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a. Huge cost, because like, there was a, the. The bank thing they did the other day. You have people finding over spots, and they'll just block the driveway because they don't wanna walk that far.
Where at?
Uh, Third West.
Oh, oh, you mean when, when Beehive had their deal, yeah, yeah.
It was, it's, it's. Hey, I don't know.
I don't think there's one that has no garages unless you get into. Um, some of the townhomes and that, with some of those don't have any. Uh, but we do have them randomly scattered within the city. Where people could not put garages on, most of them are. Um, older homes, most of the new ones do. On our, just scroll down, pal.
Yeah.
Um. Look, you're going down.
We, we already want them, okay.
Yeah. Street access. Where you get onto the street. They have to be within, you can't be from the parking area within twenty feet of a local. Street intersection or alley, no access point within forty feet of an intersection of Black and Street. Or within sixty feet of an intersection in Ontario Street. What we added in there was, access points need to be approved by the Public Works Director. Cause he's the one that could come in and say, no, you're gonna create a problem, I have stacking here, and you're gonna be trying to put out, it's gonna create problems. So we wanted that something that needed to be reviewed. And then they can approve it, say, again, you're. Does it need to be the Public Works Director or? Yeah, or he's the system.
Okay.
Or whoever he directs. Uh. This is for sidewalks. That cross parking lots. Usually it's concrete. But there are occasions where we put in the. Pony Express Car Wash. When we put in, uh, D eleven's Bank. Well, they have the bank centered in the center of an asphalt jungle. And if you pour concrete across that and you're trying to plow it. The weather will make it so they will start tearing up the concrete or the asphalt. So we allow them to paint the yellow gloss there, rather than have that. Concrete in there. Just, just to keep it going. So that they don't have as many issues, so that's what that encourages. Uh, we just changed this storage facility, self-service ones. So you take the ones where they just show up, there's not in the tandem. And they have to have at least sixty feet of asphalt or concrete. Coming out of there, because we don't require the compound to be asphalt in those situations. Usually you're turning trailers in. Usually you're turning trailers in there and stuff. It just tears asphalt out. This just says they have to have that. Plus you have to have an area forty feet by twelve. This one is in the pad for reduced parking in the pedestrian emphasis district of dormitories. It just tests where to go. I'll keep going down. In that subsection, and we've already been through that. We're not making any changes yet. Again, this is one of those joint uses and we changed it to be consistent to five hundred feet within the main building. And you'll see a lot of cross out and it's because we've moved it and consolidated it. It's a lot of that one, that chart with the same buildings taken out and consolidated. Commercial vehicles, storage of commercial vehicles, gross vehicle weight over eight thousand pounds, construction equipment. This basically deals with onsite construction. When they're bringing in track hoes, back hoes, trucks, things like that. If they're within, you know, they're trying to actively construct something, they're excused from meeting some of these requirements during construction. And that's all that does. But they have to actively be building. So they can't just park if they're saying, well, we're going to run a year or two. We've had that happen. Just ends up being a parking spot and that's their excuse.
How do you define actively? Like they've got a building permit. I mean, if they have a valid building permit.
Constructing, they're digging or hauling stuff or hauling material in. Sometimes, I mean, you gotta wait for a sub.
They look out there by twelfth west. That construction crew sat there for probably eight months. I mean, they were getting on it, but they sat there for that long. Is that actively?
If they were at one point working on it here and there, yes. It's one of those.
I just wonder who's going to balance that actively?
It's one of those we look at because there are circumstances where we're going. We started on the project, we're on back order on the materials.
Wasn't on the street, was it? Wasn't on their property?
It was on their property. But this is dealing with their property. In which building is being actively constructed on? Yeah, we need to cross out except right after, in any residential zone in which a building is being activated.
Shall not be permitted.
So that's, that's saying, yeah, we're okay. It's basically saying you just can't leave it there unless you are. More of it that was consolidated. Uh, single family detached structures shall be allowed one required parking place behind an existing space that isn't on the front yard. So that would be.
So that, that would indicate single car garages. Second space behind it on the driveway.
But that would also count for like an RV pad, right? RV pad? That's, that's kind of a gray area. I hate letting them in front of there because then all of a sudden we end up with a parking lot in the yard. And I mean, we never had one, but they had to, we had to use this form to comply, but.
The one that didn't work was over there on Four South. We had a park, the departments and they had to park behind each other. Yeah, no one wanted the first one because they got blocked in. So that really was one parking.
The tandem, yeah. That's what we're finding with all their exams. Even though they're in the same unit, they don't want to have to bug their roommate. There was one in Juniper Sands. I think it's Steven's daughter. Steven's daughter, yeah. They would actually each be driving around the block, waiting for the other to get home first so they get the back corner. Single family detached structures shall be allowed one required parking place behind an existing space that is not in the front yard. So basically what I asked you, if I have a single family building without a garage, they can park one at the side and then put one behind it. Without a garage. It'd be in the front, none in the front, one to the side. There's a garage, if you have a garage, put one in and one behind, put two in.
It has to still abide by the setback. Okay, so they can't get like right up to that.
Well, parking systems, the only setback is to the building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so when I had a twenty foot setback, it's a six foot side yard setback. That's from building structure to property.
Oh, okay.
Some of them need it too. It's pretty narrow on the sides. Okay, Kyle. More of the stuff we moved. A lot of that was in our commercial, we just made it up near the yard. End of all of our parking standards. Keep going. And visitor parking, this is in the pad. We want a visitor parking spaces to be the city's full size parking space because you can't designate whether it's a compact or, or a large. Just have to have large whatever. They have, these spaces cannot be included in their parking contract requirements. So a lot of these only have like seventy five percent. That's on the good page. They can't put the additional ten percent of parking in, count that towards their total, has to be separate. Uh, they have to have visitor parking signs on them. And if you go, one of the things they can do is if they, they can set up signage and say, this is visitor parking until ten o'clock at night or eleven o'clock at night. After that, then they can park in there from like ten until six in the morning. But it has to be on the sign. Doesn't count. There's, there's no reason for them to sit empty if they can be used, especially in some situations. But it has to be clearly on the sign. Any questions on parking? Dan's got a look on his face like, yeah, might have one. I live in the county, so I don't worry about it.
Address the downtown area. That ten block area.
Yeah, that's our next one. We're starting working on it. He met with us, we went to, and we actually invited him to come back with me tonight. I don't know if he could. But yeah, a lot of his concerns with the downtown.
A lot, and a lot of his is trying to police it. Trying to, trying to have, who's going to police all them restrictions?
He had some valid things that we wanted to discuss, but we told him when we come in and start doing the form base and get the parking, I want him to come in and get with us. So that we can get his concerns and that also. And that one will be a work meeting.
Physician over there trying to. Not have fifty different areas. Just try to understand the place.
Let's go to, what's the other one? Let's go to subdivision first. So this next one is, okay, Tammy, go ahead.
So I'm hoping I'm understanding all of this. We're running through all of these things because they could become nuisance for somebody somewhere or possible.
It's either a nuisance, a problem somewhere, or it's a conflict in hope we're trying to clarify. That's usually why we're making changes.
Mostly nuisances for the neighborhood or for somebody who's trying to get out of their driveway or something like that. So what we're trying to do is alleviate that before it becomes a nuisance. And then to take care of nuisance that only happens if people call it in, like how is that cared for?
It does usually in those circumstances because these are all private properties. So the police are not going to control any of these, our, our traffic control people, the parking attendants.
It's grandfathered, we can't. Instead of running into similar names. Right now I.
Yeah, we have, we have three McDonald's. Yeah, that's the original. That's all this and that, say, we have to buy, say. Oh, there it is.
That's always in this thing. They work. We spell off. Just a minute, I'll write a note. Nobody knows how to spell it. Those are some of the ten. Another one we should have. There are five.
It's not like that anymore.
Oh, Shannon would name, that's the family. Leaves the same bone, know it in south. Order of those twenty two. And so if you're in distance, not, not start hurts when it's been about, where it's locally, you're starting. Be more fresh than I'm just. Okay, there's one. This is really where I wanted to challenge. Now this is fact, you know, you saw YouTube. You see that? You know the vibe? Next thing you go on to your left, you know, you need to go back. And these are three options that. Third one, this does not. That's always. For example, we also look at. I'm once it's the way that. We start on the left and right, so. You were describing. I said. You said. None of them to be done. We place the word. That's right.
We weren't legally distributed. You should have started a sentence with, we were distributed.
That's why you're here, correct.
We, we, we're not reading any of it. There, there's things to change, though, very soon. Yeah, re-narrating.
He's awaiting our file. Get to the side and take. Change the one to one. If I want to live in the house and I want to. In any presence. This is if I want. For, for A D U. New town. No, that patient, so, so. Access. So. There's no definition.
Yeah, I mean, back in the day. We had.
It's not possible. Three or more is not. Basically, it's. That's the same thing.
It's taken a lot of work, Alan. Big work.
This one. Time for me. I'm trying to pull it. Uh, you're employed. The one time you show up. Showed up early, you didn't. Sometimes you get zipped out from. It's not bad. See, so. Whoever. Why not, my wife does.
I'm not used to be that.
Al's family. That one for everyone.
Right. Versus. Documented all the time. Okay. Oh, this is brand.
That's Brandon. Oh, Johnson, that's.
Look inside a chamber. Look inside of.
Do you need to talk to somebody? I don't need a golf cart.
Oh, you don't?
My grandson.
Okay, well, yeah, that'd be good. Well, the chamber, the chamber. Well, actually, we want to leave that. Happy to have an extra one. I'll just tell them this. Yeah.
Anytime after eight fifteen on Friday and at the ginger hike.
And you'll get the case.
Don't be living here, right?
Be here, yeah.
My daughter. Being helping to be solved.
Me, yeah. 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 Parade eagle. I just did a film, I got this new phone.
Oh, yeah, that's smart.
New and up.
A frame.
Parade is best. But I have to keep two phones, the one performance. Unlike a lot of my contacts, it's got a lot of. Great. Okay, let's see, who stood on the. Eric, Erickson. You did that last week? Oh, yeah, yeah, we need to change that. David Reeser. I'll just switch you and Eric in that category right there. Reeser, and so that would be. And then that would mean, um. Let's see, so that means Eric Erickson would you lead us in the pledge? Okay. That'll work. Prayer, pledge. Okay. All right, let's get going, it's time. Thank you, everyone, for being here, we've got a huge crowd tonight. You're like, you're like the, the only one that's interested in what's going on in Rexburg. What's your name? Jenna? Oh, I have a daughter named Jenna, are you a high school student or college student or? You graduated, okay, well, we're glad to have you here. Uh, we'd like to go ahead and start our meeting tonight with a, uh, a prayer by council member David Reeser, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Eric Erickson, council member Eric Erickson. So, council member Reeser.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful at this time for the opportunity we have to meet together and discuss the needs of our community. We're grateful, Father, for this place that we have to live and for the good people that live among us, and we ask that thy wisdom be upon us, that we might be able to do what is best for our community and always, uh, have the best interests of the citizens at heart. We're grateful for this, uh, country that we live in, especially at this time of year as we celebrate, uh, the founding of this country, and we are grateful for the freedoms which we have and ask thou please strengthen us as we try to. Keep those freedoms and to protect them and also to be sensitive and considerate of those around us. And we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Stand and plead after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead with the roll call of the council members, please, Mariana.
Here.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember C Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Here.
Council President Walker.
Here.
All right. Everybody's here. It's a. Good, good time. Okay, we have item number four is our time for public comment. These are for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment at this time and make us aware of anything? Jenna, do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, good. Any, is there anyone online? Back there? Anyone online with their hand up?
Uh, we do have one person online, but no questions at this time.
Okay. Well, we welcome that person who is online with us tonight as well. All right. We will move to item number five, which is our staff reports. We will start with. Or, well, actually, we only have one report, and that's with the our Public Works Director, Mr. Keith Davidson, for some surplus items. And an approval.
I think the mayor, so we talked about it last Council meeting, uh, but we just didn't have it on there, so we. Put it on the agenda. It's the two sweepers that we no longer use and we haven't used for several. Years.
Oh.
Um, and so these are the ones that that we're looking for to surplus.
I think is there, are, do they run? Sort of?
The engines, I think the back engine on one doesn't run. Um, on the other one, I think it's all the hydraulics are shot on it.
So they're just basically kind of fixer-uppers that somebody might want to pick up for fairly cheap. Okay. Okay. And so we need an a move, a motion to surplus these two items. Is there such a motion?
I'll make the motion to surplus these two sweepers.
Moved by Councilmember Colin Erickson, is there a second?
Let's talk.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll surplus item number two.
All right, and this next item is, uh, we need to rebuild well number one. Um, it's just. Over time, just worn out. And so basically. We're we're needing to rebuild it. We had three bids on this one. Uh, Agricultural Services was our low bidder at eighty six thousand. Um, so we're seeking approval from council. Uh, to award this to agricultural.
You feel comfortable with that bid?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Egg services at the at a Blackfoot?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, they've been, they've been there a long time.
Yep.
Keith, just tell us where well number one is at.
So well, number one is up by our Blue Reservoir off of Fifth South and Second East. So we got well one and six, so there's two wells at that location.
Okay.
Is it the tank that sits right on the ground? Yep. Okay. Yep, the tank that sits on the ground.
And that, that's probably, is that our oldest well?
Um.
It's number one?
Yeah. So. Was it?
Makes sense. Okay. All right, well, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this bid. Is there such a motion?
Mister Mayor, I would move that we accept the bid from Agricultural Services. For the renovation of a rebuild of well number one.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead with that item. Any? Any of the questions for Mister Davidson while he's while he's up and about?